Town Council meeting for Thursday, February 24th. Meeting is in person. Welcome, everybody. If anybody has any questions or comments during the meeting, they can email sulessard@buxportmaine.gov, or we can also call 7368-469-7368. Roll call, Jake?
Councilor Eastman?
Here.
Councilor Morrison?
Yeah.
Deputy Mayor Bissonette?
Here.
Mayor Stewart?
Here.
Councilor Ormsby?
Here.
Councilor Downs?
Here.
Councilor Rattler?
Here.
We have a couple of presentations tonight. First one we're going to do is we're going to read a legislative proclamation. Sue?
Yes, I'm sure everyone in the room knows that we lost a local treasurer this year, Frank Dunbar. And Frank was honored by the State of Maine with a legislative sentiment. And we had the opportunity this evening to read this into our record. Frank was a very important part of the town of Bucksport and a local leader. Whereas the 130th Legislature has learned with deep regret of the death of Frank M. Dunbar of Bucksport. Mr. Dunbar was a lifelong resident of Bucksport, where he was known by many as Papa. He was a veteran of the United States Army, becoming an expert marksman and serving as a member of the rifle team. He later served as a firearm safety instructor in Maine. After his military service, he became a barber, working for 54 years and retiring in 2016. He also worked as an auctioneer and served as a notary public, performing weddings for generations of families. He served on the Bucksport Town Council, Economic Development Committee, and Board of Assessment, and also on the Maine Inland Fisheries and Wildlife Advisory Commission. He was a member of the Bucksport Rod and Gun Club and the Bucksport Historical Society, served as president of the Class of 1958 Alumni of Bucksport High School, and served as chaplain of American Legion Post 93. He was a member of the Belfast Nazarene Church and the Bucksport River of Hope Church. Having a passionate interest in veterans' affairs, he was a charter member of the Veterans Memorial Committee and was instrumental in placing flags on veterans' graves. He received the Bucksport Bay Area Chamber of Commerce Business of the Year Award in 2009. Mr. Dunbar will be long remembered and sadly missed by his wife of over 62 years, Jacqueline, his family and friends, and all those whose lives he touched. Therefore, be it resolved that we, the members of the Senate and House of Representatives, pause in a moment of understanding and prayer to inscribe this token of sympathy and condolence to all who share this great loss, and respectfully request that when the legislature adjourns this date, it do so in honor and lasting tribute to the deceased. Given this Fourth Day of January 2022 at the state Capitol, Augusta, Maine, signed by the President of the Senate, the Speaker of the House, and the Secretary to the Senate and the Corporal of the House.
Next, we have swearing in of firefighter medic Adrian Stone and firefighter AEMT Derek Hawes. Jake?
Can you guys come up here so I can see you in TV world?
Stony.
So I'll have you gentlemen raise your right hand. You'll say your name when I ask, and you can have to make it. I say your name.
I, Adrian Stone.
I, Derek Hawes.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And will obey the laws.
And I will obey the laws.
Will obey the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The United States.
And of the State of Maine.
And of the State of Maine.
State of Maine. That I will, in all respects.
I will, in all respects.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the Charter and ordinances.
Of the Charter and ordinances.
The Charter and ordinances.
Of the town of Bucksport.
Of the town of Bucksport.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
Will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of firefighter and EMS provider.
Of firefighter and EMS provider.
Of firefighter and EMS provider.
For the town of Bucksport.
For the town of Bucksport.
Congratulations.
There's your chance, Becky. Congratulations, guys. We'll give folks a chance to, if they want to go and get regulatory pictures.
We were lucky. Fully trained.
All right. Next is consider minutes of previous meetings. First is town council minutes from 2/10/2022. We also have goals and objective minutes from 2/10/2022. How the council like to proceed? Motion approved. Second? Motion second. Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes? Look at that, I still remember how to do that. Next is receiving review correspondence. We've got an oral police call from 2/6/22. Everybody have a chance to read that? And Down East Transportation ridership report from January 2022. Questions? Item six is ordinances to consider or introduce. We have a bunch of first readings that we just took up with the regulatory review. First is the first reading of the fee ordinance update for Marina Town dock rates. What you guys have on that, Mark?
Motion approved, or a recommendation to approve.
Okay. Next is the first reading for the update to the Town Code, Chapter Six, Section 2.3 Festivals, Section 2.8 Public Entertainment.
Same, we made a minor change there, didn't we?
Yeah.
With a slight change, but moving forward.
Okay. Next is the first reading for the update to the Town Code, Appendix K Yard Sales.
Same.
First reading for the update to Appendix K Mercantile Land Uses to Eliminate Medical Marijuana Dispensaries.
That item was tabled? Table pending a moratorium.
Next is the first reading update to Appendix H Sign Ordinance.
Approved, to move forward.
And the final first reading was update to Chapter Two to add Section 25 Complaints from the Public.
And some changes were needed there.
So that one's been tabled?
Yep, we're just going to bring back some different.
So all of these are to go forward to our next meeting for a second reading in a public hearing?
All except sign and...
So item E and F?
Yep.
And the medical?
And D.
And D.
Yeah. So A, B, and C will go forward for our second reading in a public hearing at our next meeting. Thank you.
And E?
And E, yeah. You guys are killing me. Item seven, discussion items, public transportation evaluation discussion.
The reason that this is on the agenda is that there's been discussion for the past, well, since I've been here, in my seventh year, about the idea of increasing the shuttle service, public transportation here in Bucksport, from its current part of one day a week to additional day or days per week. And that, in order to evaluate that, I contacted, since it has been on our list for some time, I contacted Down East Transportation, who's our current shuttle service provider, to ask about the possibility, if the town wanted, is there capacity? And the response was that if it was outside of what they had, it would need funding and a bus and those kind of things. But when the town first implemented public transit, the shuttle system, it engaged a consultant, Tom Cricolair, who did an evaluation and came up with what you have now, which is the one day a week, and then the addition of the taxi, which is not, which is slightly different in that you have to make reservations ahead of time, as opposed to the bus, which is a shuttle system, you get on and get off. But that was something developed with his assistance. And he happens to be the consultant to Down East Transportation. And so I contacted him. And he indicated that if what the town was looking to do was expand public transportation of the same type that it has right now, which is a shuttle system, but to expand days, that it wouldn't be necessary to do a full study. That what it would require was him as Down East Transportation's consultant coming here and riding the bus, evaluating the connection between the bus and the taxi, which technically can bring people in to use the bus, and then meeting with stakeholders in the process, such as the medical center, in order to evaluate when scheduling would be most advantageous for people who might want to use our services. And so it's on here so that I can ask you if you have any objections to me moving forward with getting you this information. I didn't want to get ahead of you with and just say, look what I found. You know, the purpose is, are you, we've talked about this for a number of years. And public transportation is not just available to seniors, but it certainly is very beneficial to our older residents who live within this area or who utilize the taxi, who no longer drive. But we have others who could and would use it. A system that's not, that only has one day, doesn't allow someone to get groceries, go home, then get on the bus, and go somewhere else. It's not enough time. And so that's the reason it's on here, is to get feedback from the council as to whether there's any objections to us looking at this, getting this evaluation. There's no cost associated with accessing this information. Unless the council decided it wanted to do something, you wanted to be doing a shuttle between here and elsewhere than, you know, if you wanted to change the world, then it would require a different kind of evaluation. But if you're looking to increase your in-town access, that wouldn't require that.
Anybody have any objections to town managers' requests?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Story Walk 2022 Library Request.
Good evening, everybody. In front of you once again, this is year number five. I'm asking, seeking permission from the council again to put up the library story walk along the waterfront. We've run it four years, this will be the fifth. Been what we consider a big success. I think a lot of you have enjoyed it, reading it, taking your kids and grandkids along, and just like to do it again this year. The only thing that I'm going to ask is if, we've done this June, July, and August, and I'm wondering if there would be any objections to starting it two weeks early and perhaps ending it two weeks later, which would just give us an opportunity to post a couple more stories throughout the season, weather permitting and my energy permitting. We're going to build new signs this year. Hammond has donated some materials to us, and I'm going to build them. We've had no troubles, as far as I know, for the town, in the whole time we've done it, as far as any sort of issues with the town. Had a couple overly enthusiastic kids who've gotten away from their parents or grandparents, and I've had to repair a few signs, but that's pretty much the sum total of it. So all I'm asking is if we can do it again.
Sure. Rich, anything to add on that? Are you looking to do it in the same space?
Same place, same spacing, same size, everything the same.
All right. Questions, comments? Everybody okay with that?
Absolutely.
That's great.
Yep.
Have fun, Doug.
Cool.
Thank you very much.
Next is Bucksport Municipal Marina Upgrade Funding Request.
Good evening. You should have a letter dated today. The docking system at the marina is 25 years old. Last year, we had a catastrophic storm, catastrophic storm that destroyed three of those floats. And when we went to insurance to get those replaced, they have no value left. They're weak, and we've been able to build some ourselves. And then last year, the council gave us, lent us some money through the town to have 10 more built. Those are the ones that are sitting in the town dock right now. They're too big to get down in the marina parking lot and require the crane to get them in the water. To finish the project, we have 29 more floats to do that, and then everything will be new. They all won't be the same year, so they all won't start to fail at the same time. Sorry for everybody at home, I don't mean to do that. But this is what we're asking for. So what we're asking for is for the town council, as this was one of the items that was in the survey sent out to the town to utilize ARPA funds. Again, this is something that we'd need to come back to the council two, three, five years. We're not asking for another position or anything. This is a one-time expense on an asset that already exists that will continue to generate revenue for the town of Bucksport. Added in that figure is three new floats on the only dock that we can expand on in the current configuration, which would give us four more floats, because our waiting list is getting out of control, and we need to start meeting that need with additional floats. That gives you a grand total of $200,580.
Thanks. Questions?
Yeah, can you enlighten us a little bit on the insurance policy that won't cover them because they're too old?
It's not that they didn't cover them, they would only cover one. They have a depreciation value, and year one, you're at 100%. And as each year comes down, the asset, sort of like your house, sort of like your car that you drive off a lot, depreciates in value. At 25 years, I'm surprised we got anything.
Okay, thank you.
And the 29 floats, that's everything.
That's everything. That is everything that has not already been done, either by Mother Nature or by us wanting to do it and get in front of it. We try to be proactive instead of reactive, because when we're reactive, they've lost money, and we have to come to you without a plan. We have a plan, we have costs. These are built with the construction costs as of the most recent ask that we had.
Is that all anchors?
Michael, can you answer the anchors?
Yeah, the anchors are, we had, during that storm in June 30th last year, we had a helix born, just pulled right out of the ground, had been there for 25 years. So we need to put in new anchor for that section of docks. So we, I asked for two anchors, because we're also moving B docks down towards the town dock, so we have more room in between the B docks and the C docks to get in people that want to come in and get diesel and gas. Because it's a little limited, and the guys with 50-foot boats are a little nervous coming in and out of there. They can, but not all of them drive as well as they should. We'd like to have another 30 feet, and that would make it much more navigable for people to come in and out. The two anchors would go off the end of B dock. And there would be granite from, from fresh soil stone set by Grindel up in Winterford.
What's the timeline on getting this done? If this is approved, next meeting?
That's why we're being proactive, because when the person who built the 10 floats investigated in October or November, when the floats came, there was a six-month delay on floats, hence the reason why they were late getting here.
So this isn't something we see this summer, though?
No.
No, but you may see them in the fall, because those guys build, they built three floats. Those floats broke on July 3rd, excuse me, June 30th, and they were back on July 5th.
They built them less than a week.
Yeah.
Less than a week, yeah, on three of them.
And they maintained our main, built our main street walls at the same time, and finished the fishing gear.
They, it'd go up a bit, and they'd be four next season. Although, if they were to get some done, some of the worst ones, we might replace as well.
Go ahead and use them, right?
Yeah, because we can launch them from the Verona, and then the three staff and myself or members of Jay's crew can get those put in like we did last year.
Is the ARPA, is ARPA available for this? It's a stretch.
Because of the final ARPA rule allows us to take a standard law, revenue loss, that revenue loss funds are eligible to be used for anything. I have a bit of heartburn over that, because we didn't sustain revenue loss to any degree that does that waiver, that blanket allows. But what we did before with the last ones was do basically a 30-year repayment to fund balance. And it seems like, if you want to stay in the same track of not using tax dollars, so to speak, the funds of Marina, you can loan it money and it gets paid back over time.
Well, and I think we need to have a bigger discussion. When the Marina came about, and I think everybody was wondering if it was going to work, we didn't want to commit the tax dollars to it. I remember sitting here when we had the discussion. I don't believe there's anybody here that doesn't think it doesn't work now, and maybe there's part of us that should say, we've got a pretty good thing going down there, and maybe committing some of the funds that we have from the town should be able to go to that and sort of walk away from the...
The truth is, the Marina, we have set it up as an enterprise account, but it's a town asset. It's not owned by a private company, it's not, it's a town asset. It's part of our infrastructure. And we learned, to our dismay last year, that in East Bad Storms, the weakest link will always go, and it takes boats and other things with it when it does. There's, you know, the risk factor of continuing to try and use these older floats when you're putting six- and seven-figure boats there seasonally is higher. And I'm not objecting to using town funds, I'm just, I've been under the same, ever since I got here, is not use, you know, that's been it. If the council changes and says, we think that using fund balance to bring the infrastructure up to date is the right thing to do, then I certainly don't have any objections to it. But I, the ARPA piece just doesn't feel right to me, because the only way we could get there is to say that we're using, taking the standard revenue loss that's available. And...
I think there are other ARPA that fit a heck of a lot easier than we've identified, and some of the other things, we probably focus that on. And I think it's time for us to decide, is that Marina a town asset that we need to make sure we're starting to support? That's kind of what I have at...
I think that if we, if we were every year having a whole bunch of slips open, like, we have a waiting list. Like, I could see if we didn't have a waiting list, and there's, you know, we're looking to try to get people in, but we're not, we're filling it. And I agree, I agree with Peter.
And the boat business seems to be thriving, from everything that you see.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'd be supportive of the improvement, but maybe not the ARPA aspect of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I'm very supportive of the improvement, I just want to know the best option to pay for it.
Right, and you know, if it is, you know, call it what it is, pay yourself back, I mean, that's...
If that's the best option.
If it's even a partial payment back. Again, it's an asset that we own. And if we brought Peter to pay Paul to pay for these things, but I don't think there's anybody here that doesn't think it's something that we shouldn't take full advantage of down there. We've got great folks running it, and we've got the ability to do it. I think it's an easy decision, it's the right decision.
Well, we've been focused on upgrading the waterfront, and that is a vital part of our waterfront. So things off together, we got to take care of it.
Anybody else?
So if I, are you...
I don't know what I'm asking, Sue.
Would you like a resolve on the next?
Yes, I would, yes, too.
Consensus, yes, no?
Well, I think what you had mentioned before about, you know, seeing if we can fund it with some of the fees, or some of the, I mean, again, it's basically an us paying us type of thing. You said it first, so...
Oh my God, I have children, this is how we act. The, what I'm suggesting is that we need to track what, that the Marina is doing its best operationally to pay, make it, to break even.
Right.
But that's true. And that any amount over and above that is dedicated to these kind of repairs.
The upkeep of the facility.
And there's been, you know, the Marina has made money, so to speak, over years, but we've also done significant improvements. We, you know, matched grants, and we've built floats, and we've done those kind of things to pay for the non-operational costs as it's gone along, too. It wasn't until last year... It wasn't until last year that, in those first floats, that we ended up doing it as a loan, following the same thing that we had done before. But the, the payback of that is from the amount that gets made when our income exceeds our expenses at the facility. Mike?
It's also all the people that are there, most of them are from out of town. And most of them, they come here and they're not going somewhere, the boat, they're just on the boat. They spend their money in town. They go to the grocery store, they go out to dinner, they, they spend their money here. They don't want to go anywhere else, they need their boat, so... And it's kind of what we're asking in this way, is like a capital improvement fund, only backwards. You know, you don't have a capital improvement fund and we need one.
Well, that's where, that's where we're at, I think, is that we're going to decide that this is actually a piece of us and we own it. And let's, let's take care of it like we do a fire truck or anything else, you know, a building that we own. And I think you're exactly right. And again, six, seven years ago when we started this, it was, yeah, maybe, you know, roll the dice and see if it works. And I think, I think it's, I think from where I sit, it's, it's shown that it works. So let's, let's go to the next step. Everybody okay with that? Soon we'll grab something up and we'll pick it apart for me. All right, thanks, guys.
Welcome. I'll stay for your next one.
Okay. Next is a request from Powerwise to receive a donation of $6,000 to $8,000 per monitoring system to be installed. At the Folu will take plants at the water treatment plant, which would also include a weather station that will monitor the solar irradiance and temperature of the panels. Richard?
Mr. Carsten Steenberg, owner of Powerwise, approached me about donating the system on behalf of his company to the town. So I apologize for the poorly worded way this came out originally. So we're not giving him, and he's donating a system and it will...
And this was better, than what I just read?
Well, I was... So, and I'll let Mr. Steenberg speak to this more eloquently than I can. But basically what Powerwise is proposing is to put an inside weatherproof cabinet to install a gateway data logger, which they connect the power meter and the weather station. It measures how much the PV plant generates at any time, connected to the output of the inverter on site. The weather station monitors the intensity of the sunlight both at the same angle as the PV solar panels and just in general also monitors is the template of the PV panels. The cooler the panels are, the more power is produced. The gateway gathers all the data and sends it to an online portal every minute or every five minutes. The town will have access to see the real-time weather and how that affects the real-life power production of those panels. We have something similar that is on the economic development page on the town's website that monitors the ones at the town garage. But we have partnered with Mr. Steenberg for an electric vehicle charging station at his location as well. So it's been a very good partnership.
Should I elaborate?
Sure.
Anytime anybody's given us anything, we always like to talk.
No, so I feel like, you know, we are a small company in a beautiful town and here's an opportunity to actually get our equipment to work. And I feel like, you know, I'm proud of what you guys have done at that, I drive by every morning or evening. And I feel like if, if we can help to kind of make the citizens or the town people hear more aware of what's going on, you know, have a link on your website. And maybe even put a tablet in the, I would also, I would put a tablet in the hallway upstairs, but, you know, to just, to kind of rotate a different screen that can say, okay, this is how much we're generating.
So, I gotta, is there any tail to this for us? I mean, is there any added cost on top of this?
So, I know it was a vision entity that did this for you and I know them pretty well. And I think that they will work with us to say, like, you know, okay. I know that it's kind of a gated, it's closed thing, I don't know if you were the one that managed, opened the doors or...
No.
We have a contract with Main Water, the company that operates, but, but staff is on site every day. You know, there's, there's always access.
So normally, you know, we would say, like, if there is internet access there, that would help us. If not, we will basically have a cell modem inside our box that will just communicate via cell service. But there will, there will be no, no fees, no charges for you guys.
Cool. Everybody questions?
No questions here.
Sound good?
So, if it's approved, then probably something we'll start in around April 1st.
I'm pretty sure we just approved it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is really a great thing for the community, because they're sort of beta testing this new product in Bucksport, which is more visibility for Bucksport, and thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, next, we're in agenda items. First is resolve 2022 to 34 to approve acceptance of MDOT grant funding of $233,500 for downtown retaining wall replacement. Both councils like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second?
Motion is second.
Any questions?
Rich deserves a big pat on the back for this one. We thought we were going to have to wait another year before we could get, but he's like on speed dial with a DOT guy. And when they found out they had money to do it, he was the call, because they knew that we were ready, had plans, had, had done all the legwork. And all the legwork is sitting right there in that chair, so thank you for that.
Could you tell everybody again which walls we're replacing?
Yes, 15 Central Street, 35 Central Street, 39 Central Street. Who actually reached out to the town manager while the main street walls were going and wants this done, needs it done. 68 US Route 1, which is located next to Buck Cemetery, the capstone at our... She was supposed to be part of the last one, but I tried every means of communication. I have a way in now and we'll get that done. And then 166 US Route 1. And the interesting thing about 166 US Route 1, with the warming weather and the storm the other day, Chief, Public Safety Director Gagin let me know that there was water coming from that wall. So I went and videoed it and we've, we've got issues, sort of like the baseball wall. I have a feeling with the deep freeze, that might bust out, so...
Where is that one, Rich?
That is the Johnson House. It would be right by the, the long, the long fence that has the number and the hotel. Do you know where Jack, where Jack lived?
Yeah.
The next one over.
Yep, yep, thank you.
It was Jack, next to Jack Gordon's old house.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes?
Thanks, Rich.
Thanks, Rich.
You got it, Rich.
Resignations, appointments, assignments, elections, we have none. Next is approval of quick claims, discharges and deeds. First is a quick claim deed for Ruth M. Bennett, map 6, lot 52. Tax lien dated 6/30/2020. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Motion is second?
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Next is a quick claim deed airs of Dorothy Miller, map 43, lot 11. Tax liens dated 6/19/2019 and 6/30/2020. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second.
Have a motion of the second. Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes? Neighbor's report. And there's also a wire report, hopefully we ran a chance to see that, read that in there also, along with the other reports.
I have attached the ad for volunteers to participate in the proposed Neighbors Helping Neighbors program that we are looking to start on a twice-a-year basis. It will be in the enterprise next week and it will post it on our website and Facebook page as well. We will also be holding another Make Bucksport Beautiful Day on Saturday, May 14th. I would like to repeat the ice cream cone incentive program that we did last year. We had good participation that resulted in roadside clean improvements in many areas of the community. So if there's no objection, I would like to do the ice cream cone incentives. Axel was featured on the news on both channels 5 and 7 tonight. Both were in town to get some information and video footage of our newest public safety resource. He's quite the television star at this point. Approximately 350 feet of sewer line on Central Street, beginning at the intersection of Broadway and Central and heading out Central, needs to be replaced. Main Water has prepared a preliminary cost estimate and I'd like to schedule an infrastructure committee meeting to discuss that project. I also spoke with John Devlin from MDOT today about the Central Street and the work that needed to be done on it. He was going to do a site visit today, in particular to look at the drainage issue near the intersection with Millvale Road. He indicated that MDOT would address that type of drainage problem. But for the remainder of the road, their standard process before turning a road over to a town is to simply pave it. Which would not address the issues particularly, in particularly from Main Street out to the bridge before Broadway. That really needs mill and fill. It can't do reclaimed grade pave, because there's too many utilities in the, it can't get deep enough. But mill and fill to give a decent base. And then the middle third of Central is not in bad paving and trim would be okay for that. And then the final third, where the drainage issues would need reclaimed grade pave and the drainage issues. Since all they generally do is pave, another option that would be available to us is a municipal partnership project with MDOT, which is 50% locally funded and 50% state funded. And while you could get to just pave it with no investment, unfortunately, in two or three years, you're going to be right back where you started, if not sooner, just because of the traffic on the road. And that perhaps a better option would be to investigate the municipal partnership, get that road in the condition that it needs to be and then have it as part of our regular, what we now do in terms of road maintenance to keep things up.
But that would, would that just be the first third?
No, that would, that, if we did a municipal partnership project on this, it would be for the whole 2-point-something miles, which would include mill fill at the beginning, reclaimed grade pave at the end, and paving of all of it.
But they're going to fix it?
They would, they would pay for 50% of the, of all of that cost. Plus, they would pay for 100% of the drainage improvement.
That's what I'm asking.
Yes, drainage is 100% on them. That, that they have indicated they would do. So, I mean, it's not in front of you to vote on, but I, this is, I'd like you to think about in terms of, you know, when they do come back to us with this designation of a road change, I would like to think we'd given some serious thought to what we want that road to be, as opposed to, I mean, we've taken and are taking a lot of care to try and prevent roads from looking the way Central Street does from Main on up, so... Anyway, that was, that's an ongoing discussion, some more food for thought. But the municipal partnership project is, I think, 50%. Getting the state to pay 50% of that would be more valuable than them paving it, both in terms of dollars and in terms of impact locally. I contacted Thomas Stevens and, who got our cemetery bid for repairs and he will be doing the repair work in the cemeteries in midsummer. They'd notified him, they had gotten the bid and he has some other work ahead of us right now, but will have it done this summer. There's a cemetery committee meeting at 11:00 AM on Tuesday, March 1st. The meeting is being held remotely and the agenda has been posted for that meeting on the town website and in the town office. One item that they will be reviewing is a proposed cemetery budget for the 22, 23 year that better identifies maintenance being done by public works, work done by contractors, and budgets for repair and maintenance of stones in our cemeteries. The committee had requested that the town consider a more structured format for cemetery work and once reviewed by that committee, will be included in the 22, 23 budget that you review. This is just a heads up on that. And as I said, the Neighbors Helping Neighbors ad is the second.
Any questions?
Mr. Ray, I do have the...
Next is, hold public hearings or approval of licenses or permits. We have one, a private festival permit for 2022. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second. A motion of second comments. It was a great event last year, glad to see you, catch you afterward again. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes?
And you can thank all the folks that solicited it through emails.
They can thank.
Next is discussion items on the agenda for the council and the public. Anybody from the public, if anything, that's not on the agenda? Anybody from the council?
Are we going to move on that volunteer fair we were talking about fairly soon?
So I think maybe the best thing to do with that is to, I was thinking about this the other day. I think maybe because when you piqued my interest on it, if we want to set up a subcommittee through the, through the council and maybe through Rich's economic development and just a couple of folks, to find some folks to, to head that up and then see how we, how we end up with it. Because I think everybody wants to do it, it's just trying to figure out what it's going to look like and where it's, where it's going to land.
We were looking for a piggyback for, I mean, I can't remember what that was looking like. You know, something that was occurring that we were going to turn, oh, it was your idea for a town barbecue. You know, that kind of thing.
Yes, yes.
You're not the only one who can make people uncomfortable. Anyway, that, you talked about a town picnic or that, and...
And that was going to be in coordination with that.
In coordination with that. So if we were going to do that, that that would be a, a good summer event to plan for the community. And maybe if we had a committee or a subcommittee of the council with some others that we could...
What, what we can do is at our next meeting, let's, let's draft what it wants to look like and ask for committee members, if you want to volunteer, nothing huge, I mean, maybe five or six folks. And again, it's just sort of setting the framework of what we want it to look like, when, where and how. Does that work?
I would say that.
I'll put it on the agenda for the next time, yeah. Well, thank you.
Anybody have anything else?
I just want to recognize Luke for all the work that he and his crew put together for the, all the ordinances and stuff. He did a good job on those. It's a lot, there was a lot of work there, so...
And we only took half of them, so... All right, I gotta go home and get into it with you. We got upcoming public hearings and designation for committee assignments. And our next meeting, we will have second reading and public hearings on, on all of the ordinances that we did pass forward. That will be during our regular council meeting. Sue, you want to schedule an infrastructure committee? I saw, I mean, a...
Yes.
Yeah, infrastructure committee.
And a services committee. For some committee appointments that are coming up.
Pending out there.
Yes, that we need to get reviewed before they can be on the agenda.
How long is, on the infrastructure, we're looking at the sewer thing, so you think that's more than a half an hour?
I don't think so.
So if we did one, if we started at 6:00 with the services and then went into the...
Infrastructure?
Infrastructure at 6:30. That work? We'll schedule that for our next meeting. And then Kathy, you do have a cemetery coming up on Tuesday, right?
Mark is the chair now.
Mark's the chair now?
Yes.
All right.
Economic development will be on March 14th.
Thank you. Well, again, it's good to see everybody in person. Looking forward to going the next time and, about most everybody, right? Take a motion for adjournment.
Second.
All those in favor? Have a great night.